This conference will now be recorded.
All right, I would like to call to order this regular town council meeting for April 14th, 2020. Before we go on to the agenda, I'd like to make some introductory comments about how this meeting is going to run. Like to start by thanking Janice Small, Chris Luck, and Scott Hanley for work with me to bring you this virtual meeting experience. I'm going to start by explaining how this will work in light of the constraints we have while working with the go-to meeting system. As many of you are in your homes, if your microphone is not muted, please be conscious of the noise around you. Microphones on different devices have different levels of sensitivity. Therefore, the television on in an adjacent room for the entertainment of your child or spouse may interfere with this meeting. The system does not deal well with multiple simultaneous speakers. The audio from only one person will come through at a time. Therefore, please only speak if you have been recognized. If there is an exchange going on between a presenter and a questioner, each of you must finish speaking before the responding person can start talking. I do not have a traditional wooden gavel with me at my workstation. I don't need one. As the meeting organizer, I have a mute all button. If people aren't participating respectfully, I'll be forced to mute all so the person who has the floor can be singled out and be heard. And for those of you doing this meeting remotely, the agenda materials are posted on the town website. There is a tab on the right side, the second below the heading "This Week's Meetings", and that's where you can find a PDF of the agenda and backup. I'd like to start with a moment of silence. We could rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Certainly. Fishbine?
Here.
Laffin?
Here.
Barone?
Here.
Morgenstein?
Here.
Chortel? Tada?
Here.
Testa? Zada here?
I'm sorry, yes.
Zandry?
Here.
Chairman Savoni?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, on to item three, which is the consent agenda. If I could have a motion on the consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve or accept consent agenda items A through K.
Okay. Second, I believe that was by.
Fishbine?
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, the consent agenda has passed. Onto item four.
Mr. Chairman, may I make a quick suggestion, please?
Counselor Testa?
My suggestion would be that anybody who is not trying to speak should be muted because the sound coming out of the speaker goes into the microphone and that gives us these echoes. Just a suggestion, I think it might be a little more bearable that way.
Thank you, Counselor Testa, your suggestion is duly noted.
Chairman Savoni?
Yes, Madam Clerk.
I apologize, but traditionally at the roll call, I don't roll call the mayor or the attorney, but since I can't see them, my assumption is that the mayor is present at the meeting as well as attorneys all. And I'm not sure if Jim Bose is at the meeting.
Jim Bose is here, Mayor's here, Janice Small is here.
Okay, Jerry is supposed to be here too.
I'm sorry?
The town attorney, Jerry Farrell Senior, is here as well.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much.
Another party may be Steve Civitelli. Steve, are you on?
I am, Mayor.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor.
Not yet.
We'll get to him. Thank you.
Now that the clerk is all set. Item four, there are no items removed from the consent agenda. And on to item five, which is an update from our health director, Mr. Stephen Civitelli. Mr. Civitelli, if you could just.
Could I?
Unmute your microphone and identify yourself.
Hi, Steve Civitelli, Health Director, Town of Wallingford. So I guess I'll get started. And so I'll try and keep it relatively brief. Thank you, everybody, for your time and the opportunity to speak. Can I, can you get everybody to hear me well? I just want to make sure. Okay, great. First, I just want to say my condolences and my heart goes out to any of the families that were, lost a loved one due to this. It's been very hard to, you know, try and navigate through this. Right now, we have four fatalities here in town. And when we last spoke, we had zero cases at a town council meeting. As of this afternoon, we now have eighty-eight confirmed COVID-19 cases. So I'm just going to go through a quick synopsis of quite a few things that we've been doing as of late. I'm going to start with some of our medical reserve volunteers. We were able to attain sixty-eight new medical reserve volunteers. Our medical reserve volunteers are civilian and not civilian, medical and non-medical volunteers for public health response. And in addition to the hundred and fifty-four we had already had, we are in process of going through and assisting Yale New Haven Hospital with the medical surge that will be taking place at Southern Connecticut State University within their dormitories. So right now, we have twenty medical reserve corps volunteers that are ready to be deployed if that needed is requested. Recently, I had a few discussions with Hartford Healthcare about some of the issues we were having with getting our first responders tested. They were running through this regular system and it was not very effective. So in talking to Dr. Finkelstein at Hartford Healthcare, we were able to attain a window of time, seven days a week between eight and nine AM for our first responders to be tested. So that was a big win for us in that we don't have to wait as long to get our people tested. We could get them back out serving our residents. So that's one thing that we had recently accomplished. We've been spending a considerable amount of time with our long-term care facilities. As we've identified, those are the ones who are at most risk of this illness. Ashland Village, Masonic Care, Regency House, Skyview, Quinnipiac Valley Center, and Gaylord. Our public health nurse and myself have been talking to them daily, if not multiple times a day, checking on the status of their PPE and the residents that are residing there, what situations they may be coming across and how we could assist them. And we've been working a lot with their infection control staff to see how we can mitigate any potential issues so we don't have a situation similar to what I'm sure many of you saw in Milford at the long-term care facility, Golden Hill. Recently, I went to all the utilities and Public Works to, and met with the truck bays with the employees to talk about some of the concerns they had regarding the virus and to dispel some concerns because there's a lot of information out there. And I boiled it down to giving them the best information we have on how to protect yourself and others in the workplace. We've been doing quarantine and isolation for town employees and assisting in some of the larger businesses in town with some of their planning procedures for how to deal with COVID-19 exposures with their employees. I feel that the quarantine and isolations have been going fairly well within town. We've been able to remove individuals to prevent further spread within the workplace, which is definitely one of the main priorities we have. The first thing you do when you identify somebody to be the most effective is to remove them from the environment. Our environmental health staff have been going to our food service establishments that are still open, as well as the grocery stores, to try and help with social distancing. It's been a challenge, for sure. As we can imagine, the grocery stores have been overwhelmed with some of the demands as of late. We're doing what we can with them to try and help plan and make the processes they have in place better. So, and we've been dealing with a lot of the public concerns that we've been hearing complaints and other concerns related to town parks, et cetera. In coordination with use in social services, Craig Turner has been very helpful. This week, we were able to take seven individuals from the emergency shelter. And they were transported by Craig to the Red Roof Inn in Meriden. This was done in coordination with the Department of Public Health and Department of Housing in an effort to preserve and protect the community, as well as these individuals who were utilizing the emergency shelter. It's hard to isolate somebody or quarantine them if they do not have a place to do that. So they have been provided individual rooms at the Red Roof Inn in Meriden through the Department of Housing. And we have also worked out a situation where their laundry and food will be taken care of for the immediate future. In terms of what came across our desk this morning, we were notified by the Department of Public Health that Quinnipiac Valley Center on Condracki Lane has been designated to be a COVID-19 recovery facility. And so we did not have a lot of time to react to that. But at this point in time, we're working with the Department of Public Health, our fire department, our police department, to try and come up with what that looks like here in town. As it was presented to me, the National Guard would be here in town tomorrow on Condracki Lane, setting up the thirty-four beds that will be added on to the facility there. And we had some concerns locally as to how that would impact the current residents of that facility, as well as some of the EMS call volume that may be impacted by having that level of that many individuals in an acute care situation here in town. So these COVID recovery facilities are, as it was described to me, a step down from the hospital level care when somebody no longer needs a ventilator, when they just need acute care. They are going to then step down to the facility here in town on Condracki Lane. And then they will be there until they either have seventy-two hours without a fever, without fever-reducing medicine, or two negative COVID-19 tests twenty-four hours apart. So we're still trying to work through some of the logistics here in town. I'm not sure if many of you saw the press release that we worked together with the police department to release today to make the residents aware of what was going to be going on in that area. So at this point, that is the bulk of the things that have been going on. It has been fast-moving, but the staff here have been reacting very well. I can't thank the other town departments enough. The police and fire department have been amazing and coalescing around our office and helping with anything that we need. Our public health nurse has been contact tracing to try and mitigate any of the potential exposures here in town still. While other towns have foregone that, we are still actively trying to mitigate in the community because we find that that's going to be how we get out of this on the backside, is good contact tracing, a large volume of testing. And there was some discussion today about what antibody testing would be available to the general public. However, I believe that's a little bit of a ways out. So that's kind of where we stand right now from the health department standpoint. And if anybody has any questions, please ask.
Okay, I know this was a joint request, but for different reasons, from Councilors Morgenstein and Counselor Chortel. I'm going to ask Counselor Chortel if you have any follow-up questions first.
I do not. I appreciate the update. And again, I just think, I'll reiterate what I said at the last meeting, that I am, I think these updates from Director Civitelli are important for the town to hear, for us to hear. So I'm going to keep asking for an update at every one of our meetings during this crisis, just for that reason. But I thank you for the update. I do appreciate it. No questions for me.
Okay, Counselor Morgenstein.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have two questions based on Steve's report. And then my questions pertain specifically to town workers. So Steve, I just want to make a comment actually about the contact tracing. I appreciate that it's extra difficult in this time, but would say that I actually had the benefit of a patient who presumably was an employee at a facility where someone must have listed that they had been there. So then when seeing them as a patient, I was able to be alerted this is a person who possibly had had a contact. And then just another question. So the thirty-four beds at the facility in town, that's in addition to some beds where residents still remain but segregated from the rest of the facility? Is that my understanding?
So right now, Quinnipiac Valley Center, to my understanding, is licensed for a hundred and eighty beds. They will not be exceeding that. The number, the thirty-four will be a part of that one eighty. They have isolated a wing at that facility that the National Guard will be setting up tomorrow. So my intention is to go there to the site and see exactly how this is going to be laid out because I have a lot of concerns regarding crossover of patient care people, nurses, et cetera, going back into the normal operating facility and creating a cross-contamination type scenario. So I put a request into the state that the individuals that are working with these thirty-four known positive cases stay in that area and work with those clients, as opposed to going back and forth between both sections and creating a potential higher risk. So that's something that we're trying to negotiate with the Department of Public Health because, as it was put to me, I mean, it's somewhat of a business decision. Genesis sees an opportunity to take on more individuals, and they rightfully have done so. But we want to make sure that if we have any input, it could be done in a safe manner. So that's kind of what the situation looks like as it was presented to me today.
And those patients are due to arrive there tomorrow?
So, no, no, tomorrow is going to be the setup. So dependent, and I would imagine that these beds are in higher demand because they want to step people down from the hospital level care to get folks that really need that higher level of care access. So again, it's just going to be for acute care. They're still going to have respiratory therapists available. And my understanding as well, and I had the question, will these folks caring for these individuals have the proper PPE? That's necessary because again, we do not want to create a scenario where it's going to get worse on-site for everybody. Yeah.
Of course. Yeah. So concerns for the staff, the patients that aren't COVID patients and all. Okay, all right. So yeah, that answers my questions of what you've presented. I had just, I had put in a request to get some information about town buildings or town employees. So I have a little summary of what I've found out in speaking with you, with Jim Hutt in HR, and speaking today with Sean at the park and rec. So if people can bear with me, I've written it all down. Okay, Mr. Chairman? Yes?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that, please?
I just, so I had, as my request, I wanted to ask questions regarding specifically town workers. So I put together what I have learned in speaking with a health department and Parks and Rec. And then I have a couple of questions.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Yes, so thank you. And I want to thank everyone in town, employees, members of the community, everyone, because we're all doing our best in very difficult, trying times. Currently, my understanding of what is happening in our six town buildings sounds much improved from a few weeks ago. So we all know that the town hall is locked, but prior to that, the Plexiglas was installed. Social distancing has been occurring, and now town hall is locked. Much technology has been initiated by workers as best they can. My understanding is that very, very occasionally, the tax office is still unlocking doors when needed for customers. I also understand that we don't have actual shift alteration, but that some worktimes are staggered, and this might, just at the utility department, I'm not sure if that's occurring in all six buildings. A concern I have in hearing about that, however, is that we do still have physical time clocks for certain non-salaried employees. And a consideration of mine is, could, I know some employees have swipe or have badges. So is there a possibility to initiate swipe time cards rather than physical time cards? I also understand we now have two custodians in town hall. I'm not sure if Bernard has a second full-time person or if it's just Bernard plus a helper that's part-time. That's a question that I have. I understand that a fair amount of protective equipment and staff has the ability to self-clean their common areas, doorknobs, keyboards, et cetera. But that some departments are trying now to get more supplies. And things are on back. I don't know if Steve has better access or if it's all going to just be office ordering at this point. I'd also talked with Steve Civitelli. There is a company that is available if we were to want to, he used the term fog the building, to be really sanitizing the building. And last, I had spoken with him the end of last week. He was stating that that would only be being done if we were to get a COVID-19 positive case. So I have a bit of a question for Steve about that. Steve had been looking into taking temperatures for employees upon arrival at the workplace. There was the talk of this needing to be a three-hour shift. And again, there are six buildings, so a three-hour shift. Six, he was looking into that. I can let him update us as to what came of any of that. I did speak with Mr. Hutt. If we were to want to or need to use, for instance, maybe an employment agency to get these people, Mr. Hutt states there would be no labor issue with doing that. So if the town council were to want to hire someone to be doing that, it does, that it's a labor issue. The dog park is open with ten people at a time. It's a large area and social distancing signs are present. Just today was an updated meeting at Park and Rec, and they decided not to change parks in any manner. I had from the public, some requests, could basketball hoops be taken down or swings taken down so that people would not be encouraged to be using the parks? The Park and Rec is trusting that signs, people will appropriately social distance. This one is a mechanical thing. I don't have a big understanding. But the air handling systems at doors have had cycle changes. So however, air is handled in buildings. So my thoughts in hearing all of this is the following. The temperature taking seems like an appropriate action to be taking. People know that my son lives in Southeast Asia, and they are recovering from this. And public buildings have temperature taking. And if you're above a certain temperature, you do not come in. Steve can answer what that temperature is. I would like to query of the legal advisors. If we're taking a temperature and someone's over a certain amount, I would think the health department has the right to say, okay, you are not coming to work today. And then they initiate quarantine recommendations. But what if an employee were unwilling to have their temperature taken? As I mentioned, swipeable badges or different time clock maneuvers to make it so that people are not congregating around a physical time clock. Again, the deep cleaning question. Stores are doing it, restaurants are doing it. Closing for a day, we're closed on weekends, and could we then reopen? And again, supplies. Steve could answer the question of where we are at with PPE for our essential employees who are coming to work. And I do know that there are people who are using time off. There are people who, you know, have specific instances where they are not coming to work or working from home. And then just a last thing, the governor's latest proclamation requested that people not carpool. It has come to my attention that there are, in fact, employees who take us to work. And while we can't, you know, control people, unfortunately, don't all have an individual car. But again, this is why what people do at the times that they're not in the physical workplace can bring things into the workplace. And minimizing the chance of the virus being brought in is certainly our goal. So I reserve the right to talk a bit further if, questions, please, Mr. Chairman. And hopefully, I didn't ramble too much and people can have Steve answer some of my questions.
Steve, were you following along and can you answer some of those questions?
Yeah, I'll attempt to answer as many of those as I can. So when we're looking at the protection of town employees, we looked at it from two ways. Administrative controls and engineering controls. So some of the engineering controls we were talking about were the service windows, the increased air handling. So Counselor Morgenstein, what we had done was, in OSHA's recommendations for how to protect employees and buildings, they had recommended increasing the air handling cycle so you have more clean air within a building. So I spoke with Rob Bolgermitas, who has been very helpful throughout this process. And they had Reliable, who is our HVAC company, come out and change the air handling cycles within the building. So now we have fresher air cycled more frequently. Again, I'm looking at this more of a long-term event, which is why we tried to look at as many engineering controls as we can because when we come out of this, whether we reopen in a couple of weeks or a month, we still have to protect people as best we can when we do a soft opening or however that's going to take form. And that's why primarily, the best way to protect each other is by removing the suspected ill employee or the ill employee from work. We had, in terms of social distancing, we had six offices that have been rearranged recently. Public Works, again, has been very helpful in rearranging offices to provide more distance between employees. This way, we have less exposure amongst each other. Today, we did a drop-off to each town department, another ration of masks. And again, when we handed out the masks back in March, you know, there was some question about why we were doing that. And the understanding that we have of viruses in the past is that they are expelled by coughing, sneezing, and by breathing near each other. So that's why initially, we had done it was not so much to protect people from the public, but to protect us from each other in close quarters. So that was one of the reasons why we continued that in handing out the masks. And again, today, we went to every town department, to my knowledge, and handed out a ration of masks that would sustain our town staff for the next five weeks. And then in five weeks, we were going to reassess and see where we are at that point and if more have to be taken. What were some of the other specific questions? Oh, with temperature taking. So when we looked at the taking of temperatures for individuals, town employees entering the building, we did put two requests in to different vendors, and it did not work out to this point. We haven't given up that search. We were going to continue more of this today, but with the long-term care facility in town being established, that took a. long-term care facility in town being established, that took away our attention slightly, so. But yes, we are continuing to look at that particular. We're looking at a layered approach, right? So if we protect the people that are here, we remove the ones not feeling well. If we did screenings, if that ever came to fruition, that's another layer. Increasing the engineering controls in the building. We increased the cleaning schedule, March 17th. Public Works has the bid, controls the bid for the cleaning of the town hall, and they brought on a second person to help Bernard do all the high-touch surfaces more frequently. Pushbars, doorknobs, keyboards, the hallways, elevator areas. I didn't, I don't know if we specified the time clock, but that's something we could look at. I would imagine that that's something that's on their list as well. We've even gone so far as to limit the number of people that are in our mailer room at a time, to one person. So I think we've been relatively aggressive in some of the things we've done to protect each other and town staff within this building. In terms of fogging the building, Kurt Schreiber, Risk Manager, has a company that he presented to me that has that capability, if indeed we do need it. The question always became, what would trigger that? And would a ill-town employee trigger that? And early on, I think we were of the impression we may need to do that. And we still may need to, if necessary. However, in reading the guidance from CDC and OSHA, they talk about enhanced cleaning procedures. They do not recommend a Servpro or that like, a company like that. However, I think that some of the leadership in town may have an appetite for a place like that, and I don't think anybody would argue that. However, in terms of the frequency that you do it, concern is, is that if you do it today, once people re-inhabit the building the next day, it is still, it is now being determined again by the people.
Steve, can you just take a break for a second?
Yes.
Thanks. All right, Steve, you have the floor again. I'm sorry, we had, somebody's microphone was transmitting something.
No, no problem.
Off the record, so please, resume.
So I was just finishing up with the fogging of the building. We have the capacity if we needed to do it. However, we're going to take it on a case-by-case basis, and it has been a challenge to triage all for, so our office has been taking all the isolation and quarantine issues across all the town departments. And I think that while that's a large task, I think it better protects all the town employees for us to make each individual decision as best we can to protect those who are there in the actual individual who works here. I don't know if that covered all your questions, Councilor Morganstein.
Yeah, so I think that covers it pretty well. I think, again, a question for the legal department, if we, as a council, needed to move forward with money to pay for enhanced temperature taking, if we were, in fact, initiating that. The question for the legal team is, if someone were an employee and did not want temperature taking done, could they be told that's part of something that the health department has come up with? And in order to come into work, you need to do that?
Can you hear me? I don't know, my computer did something, I don't know what it did. I mean, if the employees are given a directive that their temperature must be taken before coming into the building, and they don't do that, there probably would be a disciplinary issue. And that would be something that we would vet thoroughly with our Labor Council before doing something. But, you know, if that's deemed necessary as part of entry into the workplace, then that would be that issue. Whether or not there's some alter, well, I think I'll leave it at that. That would be something we would vet with our Labor Council.
Okay, yeah, I just think it's worth knowing the answer to that, so that if Steve does come forward with, yes, we want to initiate this, if we, as a body, have heard that from you, and then the second piece of, if we were to be looked towards, to have to fund that, or maybe that is already able to be funded without us having to approve it. I just wanted to have it answered tonight, so that if it were something that Steve wanted to initiate, we wouldn't be having that question and not know the answer.
Well, the funding is, the funding is whether or not he has funding. I'm, you know, we're talking about the thermometers, I mean, whether he has a funding for it or not.
Well.
Address, it's not the legal department's decision to figure out.
No, 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 right, no, not, of course not. No, but bringing it up here with the council here is because if we had to pay six buildings, three hours a day to have it done, and Steve needed to have that funded, and I don't know. Yeah, it's a two-part thing, your part, I wanted to ask ahead of time, so that if the other piece were asked of us, we wouldn't have to put things on hold because we didn't have an answer to that.
I mean, they would be able to enact it, and, you know, we'd have to make sure that it's applied consistently throughout all employees. It's, you know, we'd have to be careful on how it was managed. But if that's deemed advisable by the Director of Health, then we will proceed in that manner.
Okay, yeah, and my impression from Steve, again, hearing his report, you know, the man can't possibly be sleeping at all. Because, again, I've been quite focused on this piece of it, and there's so, so many other pieces. But, yeah, when we had spoken, Steve and I, the end of last week, this was something that he was actively pursuing. And again, you know, not surprisingly, his direction has been pulled many, many other directions. And so right now, he had not quite, you know, sorted that all out, but it sounded very much like it was something he was hoping to consider initiating. So I wanted to kind of have that discussion here. I'm glad to hear that supplies seem to be coming through, which is certainly important. And, yeah, I guess just, the last piece is the time clock. Again, town workers have really come forth with ways to technologically work in this difficult time. And so I think the idea, the one last piece that I seem to still be a bit stuck on, is the physical time clocks. And if this is something that could be solved technologically, so that, you know, it sounds as much as that might be a surprise to some people, that most every office has a computer in it. And so most all of us know that time clocks nowadays in most workplaces are on a computer as opposed to a physical time clock. So I guess I'm just kind of asking, and I don't know who would initiate such a thing, but again, the less things that staff can be touching and together and around the time clock kind of stuck out to me as well. But I think I have all my questions then answered, Steve, thank you so much.
I'm just going to ask the mayor if he wants to address the time clock issue. Mayor, you have to unmute your device if you want to speak.
Yes, you know, we're aware of the time clock. It's not a simple issue. People really don't touch the time clock, they touch their own card, which is then inserted into the clock. Certainly, we encourage social distancing as they wait to use the time clock, but we can take a look at.
Okay.
Thank you.
At this point, I'm going to offer other councillors the opportunity to speak. I cannot see Councillors Testa or Councillor Fishbein. Now I can. Okay, I think I see two hands. So I'm going to start with Councillor Tata, you're going to have to unmute yourself.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Civitelli, for your report and for all your work with this. One, for clarification, the two people that you said were at the emergency shelter, and now they were moved to a hotel in Meriden. They were, they were not positive, right? So why were they moved?
Yeah, so there were seven individuals, none of them were positive. The shelter was closing anyways, April 5th, as it normally does. So the concern was, is that if those seven individuals, if any of them were positive at some point in time, how would we isolate them later on? So the thought was, through Department of Housing and Youth and Social Services, was that there was a program available for these seven folks to have a place to stay, to self-isolate if necessary. So we wanted to kind of take care of, take that issue off the table. So that was one less thing with that, you know, we had that opportunity, and we dealt with that potential issue, that risk at that point.
Okay, thank you, that makes sense. My other question is about what just came up today with the recovery center up in Dracky. And you had said, so tomorrow, the National Guard's coming in to make sure it's set up properly, and I'm just, I'm concerned about this, especially the, I understand it's, you know, it's a private business there, but I don't know, you know, were the families contacted there, the current patients? Like, do they know this is going on? Because I would certainly think I'd be nervous if, you know, I have a family member there, and now, you know, they're bringing in positive people. And then, just to take it one step further, how much, how much say do we have with these sorts of things as far as, it seems like the state is kind of dictating most of this. So the state, or even in this case, the National Guard, I guess, is coming in to set this up, or, you know, the governor is saying, you know, with his executive orders, and we seem to have to follow all that. Does Wallingford itself have much say with things like this, as far as, you know, what can happen in our town, what we want, what we don't want? Businesses that can be open or closed, how is that all going?
So to try and answer your question, we were not solicited, we were not told ahead of time. This was something that, it was the decision made between the Department of Public Health and the Governor's Office, was my understanding, and Genesis Healthcare. In terms of notification to the current residents there, there is documentation that has been provided to the Quinnipiac Valley Center that they are going to be notifying the other residents that are living there. In terms of what we can control at that facility, that is up for debate. I had, once I found out this morning, I have injected myself through the Governor's Office and through the Commissioner of Public Health's office that we want to have some say in how this is going to roll out. You know, they have a right to be there, but again, we want to make sure that we have some input on to, as to how it's going to look. And again, with the National Guard setting up these 34 patient locations, if we have some input, and again, my biggest concern right out of the gate was making sure that the staff that care for those 34 individuals stay with those 34. We would prefer that those 34 individuals are cared for by the same individuals, as opposed to having them go back into the general population of the center. But again, I will more than likely be on-site there tomorrow, talking about these things with them. And again, I sent a list of questions that were generated from our fire department. Even our probate office had some questions, because there's some conservatorship issues there. So we did send a list to the Governor's Office for clarification.
Okay, thank you very much, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other councillors with questions? I can't necessarily see all of your faces at the same time. There's a chat bar.
Chairman Savoy. I had a few.
Okay, thank you. Before I let you go on, there is a chat bar on this system. It's, it should appear on the right side of your screen, there's a bubble you can click. So if you'd like to speak, it'd be helpful if you indicate that there. Councillor Fishbein, you have the floor, your camera's not working.
Well, thank you. Okay, well, I think it's, oh, there we go. That should, okay, now we're good. Hi, Steve, how are you?
Hi, Councillor Fishbein, how are you?
Good. A few issues, so the recovery center, I was distressed. I got a call last night at about 7:00 saying that there was going to be a meeting today about something having to do with that facility. I had no idea what it was, and then at 11:00 this morning, I got an email to the effect of, you know, we're doing this. So I was kept in the dark, just as much as others with regard to that. Just to let you know, because I want to be part of that. I have no idea what's going on with that. Something that somebody brought to my attention, I don't know if you're aware, but at various residences in our town, I think it's the Hartford Current, drops newspapers. They're like flyers in a plastic bag at the end of driveways. They're not solicited by homeowners. And, you know, I pulled out our ordinance book today, and under 139-2, that's littering. It's of concern to me in this, you know, this, what's going on now, in that we don't know what criteria by which those newspapers would be putting in that plastic and distributing, and perhaps leaving something at everybody's house, which I bring to your attention to do with what you will. The statute is enforceable by both the sanitary inspector as well as the police department. There was something, some mention about the basketball hoop situation, and I got to tell you, I, I think that if you were going to do something like that, that you would give some good thought to that. I just want to bring to your attention that, you know, not everybody who plays basketball is restricted under the Governor's executive orders. I was at Community Lake the other day, and there were some young men playing basketball, and somebody was complaining about it. And then I come to find out, there were four brothers that live in the same house. So I just want to bring that to your attention, you know. We don't have to be as drastic, and we should be thinking that before we do stuff like that. I just need to know from you, we hear about health places, healthcare places that are short on PPE, and I know you and I had a discussion a few weeks ago about this. Are there any facilities in Wallingford that you're aware of that are short on particularly masks?
So to your first point, Councillor Fishbein, the newspaper issue?
Yep.
Okay, so we, yeah, through the litter ordinance, we could look into that, but I'll address your question about the masks. So right now, we have some facilities that are getting close to critical levels. We've managed through the stockpile that we've amassed over the years to help backfill some facilities. And we've received some donations from other local businesses to this point. So hopefully, with the order that we put in, that we asked for the bid waiver for recently, with the 3M order, the hope is, is that still comes in, and we could help backfill some of those facilities. But in the meantime, some of the donations we've received, we've cycled back through those facilities to keep them as safe as we possibly can.
And those are, those are private facilities, and I understand, you know, there's there's a dividing line here, public and private. Are we compensated, is the town compensated, when we use taxpayer dollars to provide PPE to a private facility?
So for the facilities that, when we, when we place that bulk order, the understanding was, is that if they want to be a part of that bulk order, they would reimburse the town?
Okay, that's all I had, thank you for your hard work here.
Thank you, Councillor. Thank you.
Anybody else in the council like to speak? Okay. And I'm viewing, I can't see the members of the public. If anybody in the public would like to speak, can you open up the chat bar, please? And message me that you'd like to speak. Just going to give it a another half-minute. All right. Uh, we have a, a chat comment from Edelheim Coper. A great thank you to Steve Civitelli and all town employees for managing as best as we can. And I don't see any other comments from the public. So that being the case, we can move on to item six. Can we have a motion, please?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman. I move the adoption of a tax and utility deferment program in accordance with Governor Lamont's executive orders, seven S and seven W, permitting a three-month interest-free grace period on tax and utility payments, which are due and payable from April 1st through July 1st, 31st, uh, for all of Wallingford taxpayers and utility customers without qualification except landlords as provided in said executive orders. As landlords are required to apply and qualify for this program in accordance with the executive orders.
Second.
Did you get the second from Counselor Tada? Madam Clerk.
I did.
Thank you.
Tom, send me the motion later.
Yep.
Uh, he is going to email it to you. I think at this point, it would be helpful to hear from uh, the comptroller, who is with the mayor or not. Attorney Small, do you have any contributions?
Who do you want first?
Well, the mayor's moving slowly with Mr. Boz, so you're up.
Okay, all right.
I'm here.
Okay.
Hey, you know, I'm, I'm gonna go first. Hey, you, you're right. He was slow. Um, did you say the 31st or the first? It was supposed to be the first.
I stumbled over it. It's the first.
Oh, okay.
I said the first and I tripped over it when I was reading. Yeah, it's the first.
All right. I just want to clarify that. So I provided you with the information on Governor Lamont's executive order, seven S. It requires the town to adopt one of the programs or both of the programs. There's a deferment program and a low interest rate program. Um, I've outlined for you the deferment programs. The deferment program is essentially an extended grace period on any bill that, um, becomes due between now April 1st and July 1st. Um, there is a three-month grace period in which no interest will be charged on, um, the payment. This program, um, does not apply to something that is already delinquent. That, um, remains the same. There's no amnesty. There's no, um, getting rid of any of the payments that are due. You have the option, if you choose the deferment payment program to require an application process and qualifications, or we can extend the program to everyone with the exception of landlords as I'll outline in a, in a second. Um, the alternative program is a low interest, which is essentially a 3% interest program, um, for the same period of time bills become due. It's 3%, if you're delinquent instead of 18%. You only get the benefit of that if you actually make the payment within that time period. Um, there is no application process for this, even for landlords, although they must offer some benefit to their tenants under this program. Um, OPM has indicated they actually don't technically file an application for that. Um, Mr. Boz will outline for you that the recommendation is to go with the deferment program with respect to landlords, um, after much discussion with OPM and, um, Mr. Fishbein's attempt to assist with that. Um, it is clear that the absence of further refinement of the executive orders, that landlords must provide documentation under the deferment program. You may have heard since the weekend that the governor signed executive order number seven X, which relates to tenant payments of rent and giving them 60 days to make a payment. In light of that, it is my understanding that OPM will issue some guidelines whereby a landlord could state that they are complying with that order and therefore they'll meet the test for the deferment program. So that's guidance that's, um, has not come out yet, um, that we're expecting. So those are the two programs in a general sense, uh, does not apply. If you pay your mortgage, if you pay in escrow for taxes, those payments are still supposed to be made. Um, the order does not address if you happen to stop payment on those and there is not sufficient funds. It doesn't go that far at this point in time. Um, so I'll defer to Mr. Boz to outline, um, the rationale for picking the deferment over the, um, interest program or doing a combination of both.
Thank you, Janice. Uh, and Mr. Chairman, if it's all right, Janice has done tremendous, tremendous work with this, uh, with this subject matter through, by herself as well as with the other municipal attorneys throughout the state. So I want to thank her and, and Jerry as well. But Janice is really carrying a big load here. I want to thank her. Um, you probably am in receipt, I hope you're all in receipt of my memo, uh, updated April 9th with regards to, uh, the options, uh, and in conjunction with, uh, the utilities, uh, we are seeing which of the programs i- is going to make a, a larger potential positive impact. Uh, and in the, uh, reading of the we are seeing that, um, this, uh, many, many more citizens and many more accounts uh, for the tax and utilities are going to be, uh, potentially affected if we defer right now. I don't know how many folks have, have called you. I, I've gotten three or four here at the office with regards to that, and every single one was very, very much the same. Can you give us some time, uh, you know, just like, uh, like Janice said, it's, it's, it's a 90-day window. Um, that's why we think that this is a, it, it applies, it, it, again, it applies to many more accounts, potentially almost all of them. Uh, and it provides immediate relief and, uh, and it basically shifts the payment date to a later point in time. Um, therefore not reducing overall income to the town, which I, I hope we all agree is, is, is very important. And, um, those reasons, those are the, the main reasons why we are opposing adoption of the deferment method. And I'll take any questions.
All right. Counselor Fishbein, I saw your hands first. Others, again, please feel free to use the chat bar to let me know that you would like to speak. Counselor Fishbein, you have the floor.
Thank you, um, Chairman Savoy. Um, I just, I just want to express my, um, displeasure with the interpretations that we've gotten over the last week or so from OPM. Um, I know Janice got an interpretation last week. I got a totally different interpretation yesterday, uh, as to the landlord situation. I had Janice then follow up or ask Janice to, and she very graciously called OPM and con- and confirmed what they told me. And then it appears that towards the end of the day, they changed their mind again. I just, I am totally in favor of the deferment program. I just think that it's going to be very, very difficult. In fact, I'll guarantee you that we can't make sure that every landlord, you know, signs off on this and that we make sure and that we go through the filter and all of that stuff. Um, I think the language that was given to us in the executive order is, is, is unclear at best. And it certainly gives us permissively the ability, and I'll read from it. It says that the municipality may, upon approval of its legislative body, extend eligibility for the deferment program to other categories of taxpayers, businesses, nonprofits and residents. And up top, it says that this applies to eligible taxpayers, businesses, nonprofits and residents. So we can, by the language in and of itself, we can expand it to include landlords that don't certify on the documentation. Is my opinion. And it was OPM's opinion yesterday. So, you know, Janice, you and I talked about this, I think a few times today. Is, when we talked about that we possibly could amend the motion to allow for, um, the lack of documentation if OPM changes their mind again. Are we in a place to still do that or is the door closed?
Well, I, I think a, a couple of things. One, you know, I asked, um, OPM the question about a week or so ago and was told that in fact, the deferment, you had the land, requirements for eligibility for the landlord remain regardless of which one you picked. Um, so that was the initial opinion. And then after, as you said, you spoke to them and then I spoke to them again. But understand, when I spoke to them the second time yesterday, um, you know, he did indicate that he needed to discuss it with legal counsel. So I think I had assumed all along that legal counsel was involved in any interpretation that was given to us. Um, so as it stands, and that frankly, that was originally how myself and other municipal attorneys had interpreted the language because it very clearly says, um, in a separate section that for landlords to have the deferment program, they have to meet those qualifications. That said, in the interest of time and, um, what I suggested was that if you, if the council wanted to say now that if in fact it is, opened up broader to landlords without qualifications, that you go ahead and you're, you're preapproving that, that certainly would save time. I will tell you that my understanding of the reason, one of the reasons anyway, for the qualifications for landlords is that the governor and his team did not believe landlords should receive a benefit unless they in fact are providing an additional one to their tenants. Now, the governor has in fact taken care of that on the residential side because he's imposed seven X, which is the, um, the amount, uh, additional time to pay your rent. So he's done it on that. He hasn't done it on the commercial side. And as I said, OPM is supposed to be issuing some additional guidelines saying that as long as the landlord is complying with seven X, that would qualify for the deferment program. And that they said you could, it could be done in a simple statement by the landlord that they're abiding by that order. So, but I use my, was my suggestion that possibly if you wanted to, um, you could add, if, if the governor provides the authority, that landlords could come in without, um, having to qualify. I will also note that we, you know, we've had department discussions about how to implement this and those discussions are ongoing because this is actually, this is very difficult. And I've talked to numerous municipalities who are struggling with how they're going to implement this program. And on the electric side, over 90% of the accounts are the occupant of the property. So that probably is going to be a kind of cleaner identification of who this would apply to. As to other, um, commercial landlords, um, our uh, vision accessory system, the software program does have codes that will assist us in identifying who's in fact, what is a rental property. Um, it's going to take some work. It's most certainly going to take some work and we haven't figured out all of the logistics of how it's going to flow. But, um, we're going to be able to accomplish a lot. Um, we may not be perfect in our, in doing this, but we should be able to, um, to get it done. I'm not sure how much more complicated it'll be, but we're going to do our best.
Um, so last time we talked today about this, you were going to ask them, what did that permissive language, what did they foresee utilizing that for? Did they ever get back to you about that?
Yeah, I didn't really understand it and I kind of dropped it at that point, but, um, I do have it. Um, I don't know that I have it with me. Um.
If you could share that with us, because it really is not going to change, but you know, I, I'm very concerned that, you know, the Governor's Office has somebody who's not a lawyer interpreting, interpreting legal language and giving guidance to 169 different municipalities, but.
Well, in, in his defense, he did contact the law department and I don't, I mean, I don't really want to be too critical. He was actually very helpful to me. Although, you know, we're not happy with the result of it, but, and neither are a lot of other municipalities, but, um.
Well, and the fact. The fact is that you asked a question, a legal question of him a week ago and he gave a legal determination and I asked him the, basically the same legal question yesterday and got an answer that was different. And in between, he didn't go to legal. I, that's of concern. So.
I, I appreciate that.
Um, so given what you said about the ability of us to open it up, considering that we're in April, um, would we do that, we would do that now though, because it would have to do with utilities. So, Mr.
All right. Counselor Fishbein, if you could unmute yourself. Thank you. I just wanted to clear the floor for you.
Yes, sir. Thank you. So, um, I guess, Mr. Chairman, you know, I'd like to at least give the municipality the ability, if we get more information and other executive order, I know executive order Z just came down. I just reviewed it. I don't see anything helping us there. Um, but, um, I, I would like to see it happen tonight, whether it be by friendly amendment to what we have on, on the floor now or I leave it to your good graces. So that's all I have.
Um, Janice, is there anything that prevents us from revisiting this at the next meeting if there's further guidance issued from the, uh, from the Governor's Office or from somebody with appropriate, appropriate authority? You have to unmute yourself.
I, I don't understand that, but anyway, okay. So I'll get the hang of it eventually. Um, assuming the governor, if they did that, they probably would have to give us time to adopt that because the deadline to notice, to notify OPM of which one we're choosing is the 25th. So we don't have the authority to add that now. So I'm assuming that if they added landlords, which it doesn't appear that they're going to, but if they were to do that, um, given that where we are in time, I would assume that they'd have to extend the deadline to add that. Um, otherwise, if you were going to do it tonight, I think I'd prefer you just do it by separate motion as opposed to that motion. So, so that is, right now we have a deadline of, of the 25th and telling OPM which of these two programs we're picking. So, um, I would just assume that if we're going to be given a third option, that maybe give us the time to do it.
Okay. Um, uh, anyone else from the council like to speak? Uh, Counselor Tada.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I guess this question is for Counselor Fishbein. So I'm just trying to understand what you wanted the amendment to be or possibly the, the additional motion. As, as Attorney Small suggested we do. So this would be to allow the landlords to also be able to take advantage of the deferment program. Is that, I assume, I think that's what we're trying to accomplish with what you were saying?
No, it's not correct.
Yeah, I, I don't think the issue was the participation of the landlord. I think it was the prequalification of their participation.
Okay. So, okay. So by the way that it stands, the way that the, the state, the two options, it's that the, the landlords have that extra. Yeah, I see, I see Attorney Small nodding. So I, I think I understand what you're saying now. Okay.
Is that loud?
Yes, I get it. Thank you.
Counselor Fishbein, you have to unmute yourself.
Yeah, I, I was just waiting to be recognized. Thank you. Um, um, you know, assuming this is going to pass, is a document going to be put together that explains this to the people? I mean, it's going to be. I mean, it's gonna be difficult to convey, you know, your taxes don't have to be paid unless you're a landlord, and if you're a landlord, you have to jump through these other hoops, you know, because the message is gonna be, you don't have to pay your taxes. So I, I would hope that there's some sort of plan to disseminate something in a cohesive manner. So that's my question to whomever is in charge.
Attorney Small?
Yeah, we're talking about the best way to accomplish that, I mean, it does have to be communicated, I don't know, you know, maybe there's gonna be a press release on it, but also how each utility would, would send out notification that's under discussion. We do, we are, we do plan to do that, we just have to figure out the best way to do it.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else from the council? Again, it'd be helpful if you use the chat bar, and again, members of the public, if you could transmit something to me from the chat bar, that would be helpful, I could recognize you. Not everybody's a home row typist, so we'll give them another 30 seconds. The guy who went to the same high school as I did is chuckling, I see that. All right, then there being no further discussion, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll? Counselors, you're gonna have to unmute yourselves to vote.
I did. I unmuted me, and they can unmute and behave themselves. All right. So, on the original motion, correct?
What is the motion?
There's only one motion.
On the original motion that Mr. Laffin made. Fishbein?
Yes.
Laffin?
Yes.
Barone?
Yes.
Morgenstein?
I, I'm sorry, so the motion, choices, I'm not quite clear what we're voting.
We're voting on the original motion that Counselor Laffin, which I don't have entirely. Tom, can you read it?
Yes. It's for the adoption of a tax and utility deferment program in accordance with Governor Lamont's Executive Orders 7S and 7W permitting a three-month interest-free grace period on tax and utility payments, which are due and payable from April 1st through July 1st, for all Wallingford taxpayers and utility customers without qualification, except landlords, as provided in these said executive orders. Landlords are required to apply and qualify for this program in accordance with the executive orders.
Okay, great. Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Chertelle? Chertelle?
Yes. Yes, 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 yes.
Thank you. Tada?
Yes.
Thank you. Testa?
Yes.
Xandray?
Yes.
Chairman Savoni?
Yes.
The motion passes.
Yes, it does. There being no further business on this agenda, there is nothing under item seven. I am just going to adjourn this meeting. Thank you all for your cooperation, participation, and have a good evening.
Thank you.
You too, thank you.
Thank you.